Just a comment before we vote. This is a very important, started a very important process that will eliminate hopefully any future flooding in this area and particularly flooding that had damaged the U.S. Cemetery and a very, a very important part of that cemetery which is the Jewish Cemetery that was extensively eroded and covered with silt here, oh, ten or more years back by serious flooding that comes down the Royal del Toro which is a huge canyon that goes into the Gatlin Hills and then comes underneath the I-15 freeway and is concentrated in several pipes and the force and the volume of that water is really something to behold when it gets going. And then it flows uncontrolled into the Walmart Outlet Channel and some of the, some of the areas also of that outlet that are now in permanent conservation. So, this project will put it in an underground pipe as I understand it now, it's not going to be an open channel. And it will permanently not only protect the cemetery but Highway 74 as well and several private properties. One of the things that I've been concerned about however, the city has been kept abreast of these developments as has the state and during the time that the district was actually negotiating, beginning to negotiate with the property owners, the city changed the land use designation on one of these pieces of properties, making it more valuable, more difficult, more costly to acquire. So, I want to work with the city to get some city reimbursement for the additional costs. We don't know how much they'll be in total, but they're going to be significant because it's a fixed amount of money, a limited amount of money in this flood control zone and there's very, there's other important projects that may be, may not be able to go forward or may be delayed if the County Flood Control District bears all the additional cost for the land that was, was upzoned or its land use designation was changed in their general plan even after the flood control had commenced negotiations to acquire the right of way for this project. So, those are some general comments and I'll expect to meet with the city and, and flood control staff to go over this in more detail. But for now, it's important to move forward with this conversation and I'll join the motion to approve going ahead with it.
Thank you Supervisor Buster. I understand we have another speaker, Mr. Gary Washburn. Is Gary there? Okay, let me just, are you Gary? Yes, okay, great, thank you. Come on up. Members in, members in the audience, these items I'm told were agendized for 11:30 so we will not be taking any votes on these items until we've had an opportunity to open the comments at 11:30 to see if we missed anybody. But we'll go ahead and hear your comments now if that's okay.
Thank you Supervisor. Yes, Debbie, Mrs. Wong is here too, she's the owner of the property, she'll speak after.
That's fine.
I'm here today to address the flood control taking or proposed taking of a section of a piece of property the Wong family has held for a number of years, 33 acres with all the three parcels. And the impacts to the Wong family I think are significant in that they're an industrial commercial project they had planned in the early 2005 and '06 was completely halted because of the proposed channel, so that was stopped. They had to look at a major redesign of the project. They looked at what number of buildings, square footages they'd be losing because of the channel curved through it. Impacts to ingress and egress of course are significant, changes in the highest and best use. Prior to, even during their processing through the City of Elsinore in 2005, 2006 for a commercial industrial project, they had Walmart come to offer a large potential money to build that corner. This channel being taken in there, it was never going to be a big block user, so they would lose that potential capability of land use. So, when I say highest and best use change, it's because you no longer have a big block user at that corner. The eminent domain does not match the owner's plans and their developers. Riverside County Flood did meet with us on two occasions and talked about it. Their first offer for the taking, even though we didn't agree with them building the channel, was for $131,000 for the take. Roughly, there's 47,000 square feet and a temporary control, a temporary easement that is being assessed or appraised by all parties. Flood Control's first offer was $131,000, $4 a square foot, saying usability was 50%. Their second offer was $226,000, same usability, 50%. Wong family then hired an appraiser, Bob Purdue's appraisal, and they came up with $621,000 for the take with 2% unseverance. Once, if this channel goes in, the use of that channel is for flowers and shrubs and plants and parking. It suffers inequalities in design with the channel being built there. The appraisal by Bob Purdue proposes and states, "The project will not provide general or specific public benefits to the subject party for constructing a flood control channel underneath it." The family has been a good family, ownership aligned for a number of years. They pay taxes roughly $40,000 a year to the county, had a special assessment, sewer assessment placed on it, had another drainage bond assessment placed on it, and the owner supported that at the time. So, they've paid a lot through the years, they've been a good neighbor both in the city and the county. The easement in some rate is there forever and ever. It will not go away if it goes there. Little use will come of it to the family, there'll be no rent, no income, and they can't sell it. The Wong family feels if you take it, then the easement take is worth the stated Purdue-Roth appraisal value of $621,000. I might add that Riverside County's appraisal states in it that it's taking all of the commercial manufacturing.
Mr. Chair, Gary, I mean, you know these processes, this is not about the price, this is about the need necessity and whether there's another path to follow for the channel that would, that damaged your cost less and the better, better way to go. So, do you have any thoughts on those points at all? Is there a need necessity?
There were, I think, three other routes looked at by flood control. And in our meeting, they discussed those routes and basically they're saying that they prefer the route that they had planned out to go through it for whatever their reasons may be. So, they're pretty much not going to go on the other two.
Was your plant's property ever affected by flooding from, by the water that came down or sheet water?
Very little. In 1980, when I was there, we had big floods, which basically had to do with your event. There was some water standing on the property, but I remember I had to go that direction to get around the town because that, that route was open whereas Main Street was basically two sides of town were cut in half because of the outflow channel. But not so much in, in Park because on the opposite side of the freeway at the time, there was a huge debris gravel basin that acted as a retention and so it sort of stopped it. I don't know what would have happened if that were out there, so.
Things changed after all, that was filled in over there on the other side.
Things have changed.
We haven't really seen a flood, big flood since, or sun flood.
Yeah, but I think if flood control decides they want to go and take that route, we're just asking fair market value rather than a low ball. Thank you.
Thanks Gary. We also have Deborah Wong. I took these items before the 11:30 time frame, so we can still hear speakers, we just won't take an action until 11:30. So, Ms. Wong, did you want to come forward and speak? And then we'll ask Mr. Thomas if he would like to respond on flood control. Deborah Wong.
Ms. Wong, if you'll pull that mic down about, yeah, that one right there, about an inch or so away from your, it's good, it's good, now we can hear you. So, I'm going to be recording.
Unfortunately, I was not here earlier, so I cannot defend the family for what you've said and you probably already have made decisions in your mind, but I'm here to tell you a little bit about who we are and what you're about to do today. I represent, my name is Deborah Wong, I represent my parents, Robert and May Wong, and their seven grandchildren on a property which they have owned for 48 years. Their dream was that the children and grandchildren would develop this property. They have invested large sums of money and time on this property and they have never missed a single property tax payment. In times like this, how many owners and builders have defaulted on their property taxes, let alone make payments over a span of 48 years on a single property? Because this is the largest parcel of commercial industrial land in Elsinore, they have spent $1 million so far alone on assessment on 86-1 to support sewer infrastructure for the neighboring properties. They were very much in favor of it. I can't believe they kept spending this money because we haven't gotten anything from it. My father is 93 years old, cannot be here today, but he wishes me to ask you to please consider two requests. First, we are deeply saddened that the choicest part of the 33 acres will be carved into an undesirable shape by proposed flood channel. And it was shown in Exhibit A at A1, and I don't know if all you folks received copies that I cast out last time when we came. Did anybody receive these at all? Have you ever seen them? Can I pass it around?
Give it to the clerk, please, the lady here.
It's very, you know, the plan is very large, but I think a picture from you would be nice. We had hoped to settle amicably without litigation, so that's why we have retained Gary Washburn, who's a local broker for over 30 years, to be our consultant. He has known, he has known my dad that long also because my dad used to go visit him in his office. Gary determined that the district offer was below market value, so he submitted the comps to help the district adjust their appraisal by rigs and rigs. Thankfully, the district did rescind their offer on August 8th and increase their offer. In the meantime, our appraiser, Mr. Purdue, submitted an appraisal which was considerably higher than the district's, but it only just happened last week. So, our, the two requests are as follows. We are asking the board to grant us fair compensation for what the property is worth according to the laws of eminent domain. Mr. Williams indicated that the board would be uncomfortable with his request of acceptance of our higher appraisal due to the huge discrepancy of price. The rigs and rigs appraisal severely undervalued our property, not taking into consideration the special circumstances of a large parcel bound by two state highways and the fact that the location and size dictate value. I think everybody, I don't know if you folks are involved in real estate or development at all, but you can realize that the corner where the, where you have the two highways cross is far more valuable, that little corner, one acre, is far more valuable than in the back of the 33 acres as despite comparing a house and a lot to a beauty lot. I mean, obviously, when you go and parcelize, you're going to get more for certain pieces of property and we prized the front, so we were going to develop in the back.
I need you to wrap up.
Furthermore, Mr. Williams inferred last week that the amount of compensation was not his concern, but a matter for the jury and the courts. Please keep in mind that the cost of a court battle would be the extra money that has been denied us for a public taking which is to rectify the problems of a flooded cemetery across the street from our property.
Ms. Wong, we allow you three minutes to speak.
I didn't hear any of that, I'm sorry, I didn't know. But I actually have letters and I can just pass it out, you folks can read it?
Yes, if you would just, if you would submit your testimony to the clerk here and that's sufficient. We appreciate your coming forward. We will not take an action on this till 11:30, the posted time on the agenda. So, and, and I rushed into the other ones at 11:30 as well, we'll go back on those. But so, we're going to go to our public speakers.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I'm sorry, we have one more speaker for this item. Diana Russell. She just had to hear.
Oh, okay, please come forward.
Good morning. I'm just trying to get here by 11:30, so I'll just start over before. I represent the Cemetery District. We've had a lot of issues with the flooding where this particular project will address those issues. We have pictures that can show you, in 04, 05, we had hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of damage. It's a historical site, there's absolutely a chance of it happening again if this does not go through. There's 19 culverts under the freeway that drop into the cemetery from all the properties above that area. And we've done everything we can for the Riverside County Flood Control to move forward with this. We've given easement documentation for construction. We've been there to make sure that this can get taken care of so that future flooding will not occur in the cemetery. Appreciate your yes vote on this, thank you.
Okay, you're Diana Russell, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Ms. Russell. All right, Lori Taylor? Lori Taylor? Is Lori Taylor here, Steve? Please make way.
15.1.
I'm sorry Lori, I'm looking at the wrong number, my apology, you're on 15.1. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to have to withhold any approval on, or any vote on this item.
Maybe, maybe it'll be useful, I want to share with Ms. Wong, I haven't met you before, Ms. Wong, but, but we do take, and particularly for longstanding property owners, but every, everyone, we, we don't make up our minds before the meeting, and very rarely on cases like this where there are often a lot of complexities and where the public hearings are very important because often, I, I've seen it meant over many years that there will be new facts or there will be new points of view that will come forth at public hearings. And so, that's the reason why we're bound by law not to even talk with more than one other member of this board before our meetings about any issue at all. So, while I'm generally familiar with this project, even I don't pretend to know everything about it or the extent to which it affects your property and other properties or whether there's alternate routes that it can go and so forth. So, we depend on a lot of this information for, on our staff and, but, but these hearings are placed particularly for property owners and particularly for eminent domain hearings that we can hear you out fully. So, I'm sorry you were, you were cut off, it's just one of our standard things, you have three minute limits, but if there are more questions that I or any of the board members have after this hearing, we can continue this item, which may be appropriate, and sit down in a committee format and go over it in more detail. One thing I would say, that if, if you were to, if this, if this land, if this is the right route, you know, generally the right route, and it does affect your property and it goes through portion of your property for, for this water, if you were to develop your property and there had been no acquisition, say you came forward with a development application today, you would be conditioned to put this channel in at your own expense. Are you aware of that? We haven't gone over more detail. So, in some ways, having, if, if, if this is the right route for the water, and this is, Flood Control is an expert on those things, if this is the right route, then it's somewhat advantageous to you to have, you know, to go into discussions and have the Flood Control District actually take your property. So, I, I don't know if this has all been discussed, discussed with you, but, but that's one of the things that, the timing of these things is everything, and this, they waited a while, I mean, the flooding, that severe flooding was in 1995 with the cemetery, is that what?
2005.
2001.
2005.
2005, but it's been known for a long time that there's been a hazard there and to other properties and to the Highway 74 itself, the state highway as well. So, these, this, this project is long overdue and I, Ms. Thomas, can you shed some light on some of the concerns that have been raised by Ms. Wong and any other issues? I mean, is it, this looks like a straight line, it's just a few moving points with a curve here, but are there other routes, other alternatives that damage, that don't require the taking of Ms. Wong's property that would be more advantageous from a flood control or a cost standpoint? I take it that any route damages someone's property or takes someone's property?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, you're absolutely correct, the Flood Control District has looked at several different alternatives and different options for the alignment of this facility. The name of the project is Royal del Toro Channel, it's not even an open channel anymore, it's an underground facility requiring only an underground easement allowing development over that easement.
Could you give a kind of idea how much water can come out of the Royal del Toro during the, you know, worst succession of storms, a very rainy period? I mean, how much comes down there?
My understanding is the Caltrans culverts will pass upwards of 2,000 cubic feet a second. It's staggering the amount of water that comes not only under the freeway, but there's also a substantial amount that could come over the freeway. So, it's, it's miserable.
It could potentially wash out the freeway itself, let alone the cemetery and Highway 74.
I believe that could be possible, but just knowing the damage that's done to the cemetery and the string, the, Ms. Russell could attest to the fact that back in 1980, I would expect around '86 with the big rains, we actually had exposed grave sites throughout the cemetery. It's, it's been a serious problem.
I saw, so, so the pipe or the covert that you're putting in is sized to take what amount of water?
I believe it's sized to accommodate about 2,500 cubic feet a second.
So, that's more than a hundred year, you know, the worst possible predictable.
It's a hundred year facility.
Storms, correct. Okay. And that, and that drainage area of the Royal del Toro, do you know how many square miles that is? I mean, you, you can, you can get an idea when you stand there and you look, all that is alluvium that's come down, that's the reason why the outlet channel drains so poorly because all this alluvium has been deposited there over the eons that's built that area up so that Lake Elsinore itself can't flow out very easily. It is very low flow and has to actually go uphill till it gets to that alluvium point there at Royal del Toro. So, so it's, it's a, this is a, I don't, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but is this a minor flood control project or is this big time, is this major stuff?
It's a huge flood control project for us, it's about an $8 million facility which is bigger than anything we've built for quite some time. It's, it's been a known problem, as I said, for 30 years out there. Large bond issue was floated back in the Zone 3 back in 1986, raised a lot of money for the Lake Elsinore Outlet Channel. And this project, also Proposition F project, was included in that bond measure. Now, we're finally, we have enough funding for it and we would like to go forward with it. I was going to put one more slide up here for you, just, you asked about alternative alignments and yes, we've looked at five or six or seven different alignments for this facility, crossing Collier Avenue, parallel Riverside Drive, crossing Riverside Drive at a couple of different locations. This is really what we feel to be the most cost-effective, least damaging project alignment we can come up with. We can't get water to drain uphill, we're limited on that capacity. We have environmental constraints and restrictions down in Collier Marsh, we work with all the resources, agencies to iron those out. This is truly in our hearts, the best alignment possible for this facility. I guess our, our apologies for being late today, I was all geared up for 11:30 and missed it by that much. I guess what we're really asking the board today is to, to affirm our belief that this is really the best possible project at the least private damage out in this area, that the project's necessary for, for public safety, it's, we believe it's been necessary for a long time. The Cemetery District has been great to work with, they've actually donated their property to us at no cost. The property north of Riverside Drive settled with us, purchased their property, no great issues. This is one parcel in the middle that the Wong's have development proposals for, plans for, that we're now working on. By no means more than negotiations end, and this is really just the beginning, and we intend to, to continue those negotiations all the way through and hopefully to preclude any type of legal action. Do you have any questions?
I don't see any questions Steve, I think that answers our questions on behalf of the board. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak on item 11.7? All right, see, no requests to speak, we have one minute until 11:30 on this particular item, so we'll take a motion in about one minute.
Mr. Gary, well, hey, we're passing time, we still got another minute or so till 11:30, where are we here? 11:28, we got two minutes. Does this carry more water than Wasson Canyon does down into the outlet channel?
It's fairly comparable.
About the same, so you have two major canyons that empty out into now the outlet channel area.
Definitely.
Bring a lot of debris and sediment and so forth.
Yeah, Wasson Canyon, we have the benefit of the debris basin downstream of the freeway, so that helps us tremendously, keeps a lot of sediment out of the outlet channel.
Right, but this one, we're not going to be able to get in a sedimentation basin or can, is that a possibility upstream somewhere?
You know, I don't know that it's possible. Costco, when they, when they went in, developed a huge channel upstream. I believe the Caltrans culverts, I think there's a battery of 19 or 20 of them under the freeway, just because of their size, I think they're going to probably block a lot of sediment, maybe they'll plug, I don't know, but I think they're, they will probably block a lot of sediment upstream of the freeway.
Was there some kind of this, some hydrological examination that when Caltrans put in their pipes, are they, did they, did they do that conjunction with, with Flood Control District?
You know, the, the Caltrans put in their pipes back in the early 80s with the construction of the freeway, likely not in consultation with us, they tend to manage their own engineering and on their own projects.
All right, so we're trying to make the best of what's already been, been right in front of our table.
Exactly. What we have today are really, it's akin to rifle barrels pointed at the cemetery. They're catching this flow, the water's pointing up behind them, and with great velocity and force, this water's emptying out of the cemetery as well as properties downstream impacting the buildings.
Okay, I think that Gary, we typically don't allow rebuttal, but if you, if you have a quick comment?
Thank you Supervisor. Yes, one quick comment. Having been on both sides of the table and involved in the domain, the family is just wanting and hoping that a fair market value, which we think is that number, and not the lower number Flood Control's given us twice.
Okay, yeah, I think that was made clear by the property owner's testimony, so with that, anyone else in the audience wishing to speak on item 11.7?
In relationship to the flooding, through Medabrook and through those ravines, those areas are, are variant because of the, the direction of the flow of the storms. And there's no forecast of the direction, true direction of those, there's Wasson, as Mr. Buster said, that one has actually gone over Highway 74 at times. There's a river that flows all the way through Medabrook and goes on down through on the southern side. And so, consequently, there is no true control of that flow from Medabrook area and those hills that are in that direction.
Is this property, is this property in Medabrook?
The, the source is from Medabrook.
The source is from, okay.
So, and it comes down through the highway, sending through patrol, patrol area. So, and it comes down through the highway, certainly through patrol, patrol area. So I, I do know what I'm talking about because I've been there a long time. So this, this flooding comes from different directions.
Okay.
And it's the same with the whole of the county there.
All right. Thank you, Gary.
Chair, there's no further speakers, do you have any?
No further speakers, Supervisor.
All right. We'll close the public hearing and go forward with the proposed action here, which is to authorize condemnation of real property regarding the Royal Del Toro Channel Stage One, and with the understanding that flood control district does not in any way impinge on the flood control, continue to negotiate with the Wong family and their representatives, and, you know, on the, on the eventual terms for the sale of their property.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second, including closure of the public hearing on item eleven point seven, please vote. Motion is unanimous. Just to be safe, I'm going to go back and ask, is there anyone who would have taken action on the housing authority meeting ten-one, ten-two? Anyone in the audience wish to speak on those items, those two items? All right. And also on the flood control water conservation district meetings eleven-one through eleven-nine. See, no requests, then those items were already acted on, and we just acted on eleven-seven after the public hearing. So with that, we are now going to go into our county board and regional parks open space district meeting, items thirteen-one on the county side, and two, and items thirteen-one, two, and three on the district side, and approve of those items. Second. We have a motion and a second, please vote. Motion is unanimous. Now taking us to our general plan amendments and initiation proceedings, item fifteen-one. Good morning.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, David, Mayor's planning department staff. Again, item fifteen point one is a general plan initiation process for general plan amendment number one-one-one-two or eleven-twelve. The subject property is located in the second supervisory district and is in the Temescal Canyon area, specifically on the easterly side of Temescal Canyon Road and southerly of El Cerrito Road. The subject property is approximately six point two acres in size and currently has a general plan designation of community development, light industrial designation. The proposal is to change it to community development, highest density residential designation, which would allow theoretically between twenty and forty dwellings to the acre. The property is currently vacant, as is most of the surrounding properties. It is important to note that the city of Corona lies to the west and the Temescal Canyon Wash lies to the east. The zoning of the subject property is currently manufacturing service commercial, as is of the properties in the vicinity, again, city of Corona to the west. To the north, we have residential and flood water district, or water conservation zone, zoning classifications. At this point in time, staff is recommending that the board adopt a order to initiate the proceedings for the general plan at number eleven-twelve. Would like to state again for the record that this didn't go before the planning commission, and the planning commission did make reference to the fact that the property is in vicinity of a RV storage area and other industrial uses. This concludes staff's presentation.
Thanks, Dave. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak on item fifteen-one? Please come forward. I apologize. Where is your name again here? I've got confused with these cards. I'm sorry, your card was here, handed to me late. Just introduce yourself.
You called me on the last agenda, so you got there for something.
I did, yes, I know. I have to just find you again, but go ahead.
Okay, and, you know I'm Lori Taylor, right?
Lori Taylor.
Anyway, just three quick questions on this project, or on this GPA. First of all, what is the environmental impact of going from the light industrial to the potentially maximum density? What is the environmental impact on Temescal Walsh, Walsh?
Walsh.
Would help if I could talk. Also, how does it affect the county general plan EIRs? And also, how would the GPA affect the infrastructure of the city of Corona?
All good questions, and all will be addressed through the, through the amendment process. All good questions, thank you. All right, anyone else in the audience wishing to speak on item fifteen-one? See, no one, no one. Please vote. Step up, we have a motion and a second, please vote. Supervisor, question. Motion is unanimous.